This is the Property Committee of East Hampton, Massachusetts. It's February 27th at 6:01 PM. Calling this meeting to order currently myself, Owen Sarah and Councilor Rothschild are here in attendance. Is there anyone here from the public to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? So the current agenda items that we'll be talking about tonight are the dog park and the agenda item for inventory city-owned property. No, then we'll move on. So the main agenda item that we'll probably be discussing tonight is the proposal for a dog park. As I'll just summarize quickly, this has been on the agenda probably for about a year and a half. It was brought forward by myself. We chose about seven or so sites in the city and between deliberation through the Property Committee and discussions with the public, we had narrowed it down to a single site at Oliver Street. However, Councilor Rist and I spoke earlier this week, there was some concern about, variety of concerns about that site. Unfortunately, it was the only one that seemed to meet the criteria to apply for a Stanton Dog Park Design Grant. But there was concerns about the distance from the center of town, destruction of trees, et cetera. And my colleague called me up and said that he may have a better alternative. So I know that there's some public here who wants to speak, but I think that, I'm not sure what you'd like to say yet, but I think that after Councilor Rist speaks, he may answer some of your concerns. So I'm going to turn the discussion over to Councilor Dan Rist.
So how did this happen and how did I get involved? I went to see John Mason about CPA matters and off the cuff I said, hey, the dog park, what happened there? And he told me, Virtue Design never came to them and never talked to them. Bottom line, I said, well, okay, I understand. Because I wanted to understand, I wasn't involved in those conversations. And he said, yeah, but I have an idea. This came from him. And he said, there is cemetery land. There's JP, good. There's cemetery land that is right off Williston Avenue that would be pretty perfect for this. I said, really? So to make a long story short, he is proposing, and this is the land, right off of Williston. So I said, I will try to present this. The factors involved in this isn't city property. It is city property. Does it have infrastructure? A road can be built.
Yeah, it would be extension.
So here's, here's the property. I'll try to show you guys, okay? This land right here, this way off in the back is a large, I walked it today, it's a large field that was used for the dredging of the park, dredging of the pond. And it was used to stage the high school. So it's compressed land, it's a very large area. And Jeff Bag and I looked at it, Jeff likes it, and he said that what we could do is put a road, we'd have to cut some trees down, but not as many as Oliver Street and certainly not as many as in the park. Cut some of this down, add some area here, I'm showing this to you, Lindsay, add some area here for the parking and because I didn't know this, you have to have two parks, you have to have a park with three dogs and little dogs. And we could fence it so with a black fencing that would allow it to be visually out of the way of the neighborhood so that they wouldn't see it. But it's so far back that he doesn't think there'll be an impact on these neighbors. You would get in here, off of here, there would be no access to the, from the, no vehicle access available from the cemetery. But he also said, John said this, I'm willing to do some maintenance because I'm there anyway. I have to cut the grass on the field. And one of the things I worried about at Oliver Street, and I wanted to tell both of you, I want to vote for that. I can't. I think it's going to be a mungo, I don't think there'll be enough people to go to it, and I'd rather see something. And the only reason I say that in hindsight is they've all affected me and I really feel that I don't want to build a park that in five years, nobody's cleaning it up. And John said, he can't go all the way out there to clean it or fix it. And I feel that if we're going to build something and spend CPA money and use up the Stanton Grant, we're going to do something that more people can attend to. And I like to help the people who don't have cars that can walk to this from the center of town. Affordable housing, you know, the lower income people that live in town in apartments. This would be perfect for them. It would also reduce the dog traffic in the park where people illegally let their dogs roam. They're not supposed to do that. But if we can build it right here, I think they'll come.
They will come.
So that's my pitch. What we have to do, and he feels it would happen, is that you have to have, I wrote this letter to you, a formal request to the Property Committee, and I'd like you to do it soon, to Jeff, to Park and Rec Commission, to allow us to study this land. They say yes, and Jeff Bag will use his funds to get Virtue Design to do another plan. And he's asking that you put off the public here to the second meeting in April, giving Virtue Design enough time so you present both Oliver Street and this one, and see how people react. But I want to tell all of you, unless we have residents who really want this, they better show up. Huh? That's at least an acre, it might be more. But there's plenty of room here, we just can't, we have to have a buffer to the, to the water. And I looked at the conservation land, there's nothing except over here. There's plenty of room, depends on how much you need. The design, and John insisted that Virtue Design walk with him this time and they can talk about it. But you don't go there until the Park and Rec Commission says yes. And you guys, if you want to explore this, it's up to you. But I think having an alternative, if I'm, the reason I'm doing this is if I'm going to say I'm not voting for that and this came to me out of the blue, I want to present it to you, give you an idea, you know? And I think it just satisfies me with who can use it, so much better.
Well, I think this is wonderful. And I appreciate it because, you know, as much as, you know, I, I wanted to support the Oliver Street location, I had some concerns. So first thing I'd like to do, do you have time?
Sure, a couple of few minutes, I can answer questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to be home by 6:00.
So then I want to just open, I wanted to open this up to public comment if anyone here has anything to say about Councilor Rist's proposal.
I can say, my property is right next to Oliver Street. This is hard, I want my dogs, I do rescue, I want my dogs out here. And this, this was my dog, Jeff. And a week ago today, he died. He was perfectly healthy, just had his dental, all his liver was perfect. I took him out there and a day later, he hemorrhaged and he's dead. I took him to the vet, the vet asked me if he could have been poisoned. And he was safe, I take five of them. He was always the leader, so he'd go a little bit ahead. The vet told me to take him to Tufts, I rushed him to Tufts, they thought the same thing. My house, Colvette, thought the same thing. My dog was poisoned. And I, and I did not do an autopsy, did not want to do that, but I cannot be sure that somebody did not put something out there to harm my dog. And not only that, you know, I love dogs, sometimes I have as many as 11 rescues, I, you know, I have a kennel license. And I take all the ones nobody wants. But they don't, people for one thing, there's so much trouble out there at night, you could ask the, you know, ask the police, there's always trouble there. I had a young girl banging on my door one night, some of the kids were trying to murder her.
Oliver Street?
Yes!
That's another reason not to use it. At least this is close to town.
It's terrible. It's, it's like every night, they're speeding up and down the street, they're drinking, there's parties in the woods, there's fires in the woods. It's like, it's, it's something bad is going to happen there.
And the Oliver Street area?
And there's nowhere to, to watch it.
Okay, well. I'm not, I'm ready for other reasons. I really want to say I'm sorry after the last.
Yeah, he was my soul.
Well, one of the things I would help is.
And another, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I also, and they did not walk my property, I have another building lot there. And how is that going to, I was hoping that one day if my granddaughter wanted to, she could put her house there, be close to me. But how is that going to affect me? How far would this place be from my property and, and Mr. Brady's property? I'm just wondering about that.
There's a lot of problems with the Oliver Street lot and you're pointing out some more. Anybody else have anything I could answer questions?
My name's Jerry Lucy, Malibu.
That's Corky.
And my stuff, I go out there, I do a lot of shooting, I drive a passenger on my property. And there was one time, we were out there wanting our dogs, we were in a garage where we didn't want to put them. We watched a drug dealer. And the two guys that were dealing, they were dealing drugs with these two girls. And I mean, I've seen all this stuff, but I was on the force for a while here. And I mean, I just kept my hand up, I didn't know what the hell we were walking into.
Well, I think the police ought to be notified.
Yeah, they, they stayed out in my driveway, we allowed them to park in the driveway.
I'm really sorry to hear that. Well, that's, I'll talk to the police people, it sounds like they're already down there. Anyone else with public comment about, about this or questions?
You know something else? There it goes. Those pine trees in those woods, you notice how straight they are with the lines? Do you ever notice that? My dad, during the depression, planted those trees so he could make a few dollars. And now you want to cut them down. This is like, whoa. We put up with the landfill, we put up with the contaminated water, and we get horrible smells from whatever that thing is on the corner there of Oliver and Clark Lane. And they wanted to put a firing range in there, we blocked that and successfully won. I have nothing against a dog park, I just don't think, I mean, I don't want everyone's dogs running on my property. I don't, who's going to stop them from running loose on my property? Who's going to, who's going to say they had their shots with all these diseases now that are so contagious?
Okay.
Okay, well, so you're in favor of this alternative site.
Can you tell?
I just want to say that the reason I brought this up is if I'm going to vote against the dog park, I want to bring an alternative in that might be useful if the Park and Rec Commission, who sees it that way, he's on the.
Does he know about it? Do you know about it?
He talked to, I think he talked.
So what's your opinion on it?
Well, wait a minute.
Sorry.
I want to make sure Jim's up to speed. But anyway, I want you to know that I'm not opposed to a dog park, but if we're going to do it, I want people to use it. And I think if it's closer to town, more people would use it. And that's also better if John can do a little maintenance because it's next to him, that's even better because I'm worried that the friends of the dog park end up not happening, which happened in Agawam and happened in Amherst. They don't, after a few years, they drop off. So this has a lot of advantages. And Jim, just to catch you up, I've tasked the Property Committee with asking the Park and Rec Commission for permission to pursue this. I've asked them to do that so that after that, Jeff Bag is willing to spend the money with Virtue Design, with John Mason and all, to look at the whole property. We talked about, so you can catch up.
We talked about the meeting on Wednesday.
We talked about this having a road right here in, and then maybe some more land, some tree cut here. Right, and that's a big area. You guys could get up there, if you're ever over to the cemetery, you can look at it. It'll need to be cleaned up and fenced. And it's also far away from the residents, it's more than 150 feet from the residents. I think that's.
Well, that's, that's just a general guideline in terms of.
Any walking distance from downtown.
Any other public comment about this specific proposal, Councilor Rist?
I'm all for it. It's a perfect place for it.
It just seemed like I had concerns about the Oliver Street one. I did, I was kind of like, I was ready to just drop it because I, I know that that's a bad, you wire the house down.
You're brand new.
I don't know anything about that Oliver Street, I don't, how big is it? I don't know anything about that.
It's a pretty good size.
Is that, is that online?
The final schematic might not be online. If you leave your email, I can, I can send you that.
I'd like to see it too. Jeff did say he's got, he wanted to send it to me, so the schematic about, what you see they do there will probably translate to this area somewhat, right?
It's certainly true.
Any comment from the Councilors of the committee?
I just wanted to see, if you have any questions.
I'm just totally thrilled that this option was available.
And John Mason.
I am always bush. As Jim knows.
Well, it's not in the park. That's the good thing.
But you control that area.
Right, but it's not in a gated park, so it's an accessible.
All the time. People want to clean it.
It is on the park's own property, right?
No, it's on the cemetery.
Cemetery, which is.
Cemetery is under Park and Rec Commission, but it's city property, which is important to the state.
I have a question.
Councilor Rothschild.
Thank you. Does the, so you said there's only car access, so will people lock their dogs to the cemetery? Because right now you're not allowed to walk your dogs.
No, it's on cemetery roads.
We're going to put a new road in there. And there'll be fencing, so if somebody drives their car in and leaves it there, I don't know who enforces that, but you can't prevent people from walking their dogs.
There'll be a separate, there'll be a special.
There won't be a cemetery.
There'll be a cemetery there, that's our thing. But I know now you're supposed to lock your dogs.
I'll show you, Lindsay, this is what we talked about with Jeff today, right? And this whole section might be cleared for more land, for the dual park we need and for parking.
It was already a state.
But if you look at these, if you look at these roads here, they exist. So people might do that, but that would be up to Park and Rec Commission for somebody that, that don't come here. I mean, I don't know, if there's always somebody.
They're not going to park in the cemetery.
I don't think the neighbors in the cemetery will complain either.
My dad is there, he loves dogs.
Oh. Councilor Kuzitsky, did you want to say?
No, I was just, yeah, I just wanted to add that I had a lot of concerns also about Oliver Street location, was not feeling comfortable going forward with that proposal based on my own reflection and talking to residents, so I'm really glad that this other one converged. So thank you.
Hey, John Mason. John Mason said Oliver.
Yeah, that was our last meeting.
I said, what?
The more we looked into this, I became more and more convinced that we needed to put the whole thing on hold and wait for the right location because Oliver Street really isn't the right location. Just to bring up a little map, this is a map of who used, who would use the park on Oliver Street. Generally, parks are used by the first quarter mile away, then the next half mile away. It's very interesting that we'd be building a park in East Stanton where more people would have, be within a quarter of a mile of Northampton. 30 parcels versus 14 parcels in East Hampton. So twice as many people would be within the first quarter mile. And then it kind of evens out a little bit if you go up to the next level, 47 parcels in Northampton and 38 parcels.
Well, it's a private park.
You're not only going to get one chance to get this right.
I agree with you.
And, and we better do it right the first time. Because we're not going to have the resources to put in another park, in East Hampton, to make it accessible to as many people as possible.
What John said to me, which will influence the Park and Rec Commission, is if, God forbid, in 10 years it's not being used and it has to be torn over, it's cleared cemetery land. He did say, so you know, that he's leaving a lot of land for cemetery expansion.
Yeah, there's the.
Still a lot, a lot of land here and here. So you guys can see, he wanted to make sure we kept that for cemetery expansion. He sees that as a 10 to 15-year availability right there. So if, God forbid, this park became nothing, unlike at Oliver Street, it'd be turned into valuable property for the cemetery. Those are all good things.
So do the cemetery people own the land?
Cemetery people own it.
City owns the cemetery.
And the city is required.
I can't say years down the road I want this to be that.
No, 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 the park is the cemetery. We're the same, they combined us.
When you buy a plot, you own the plot where the tombstones, that's all you own, you don't own the cemetery.
Well, I know, but I'm saying like whoever buries their people, their residents.
Well, they might complain, but I don't know. Are you guys?
It won't be anywhere here then, but it's not.
It's not like, I think they'd start complaining if they were there Memorial Day and everybody was driving their cars in to go to the park, the dog park.
It's a whole separate.
That's a whole separate issue.
It's another entrance.
Sir, at the end of the freeway.
Just like, we have loads of game shows that go up on the Oliver Street period, we can end up disrupting all of that law. We have, we can have most of it. Another, we have heavy damage. And it's, you know, it's really nice to see, it's, it's, I just hate to see that all get disrupted.
So coming to my view, one day, a guy out there walking his dog, she couldn't find his dog anymore. His dog, walking freeway.
Porcupines up there.
I want to say.
Do you think of porcupines in a cemetery? With the dogs.
All right, so, thank you.
Anything else from you guys? I'm happy to go and thank you for.
I just, just.
Your effort here. Jeff said he can't do anything, he wants to move on this, so if you guys say okay, and Park and Rec Commission says no.
Well, let me, I just want to say a few things.
I'm putting, and so what are they cleaning up?
Oh, there's usually water infrastructure, typically some sort of, some sort of maintenance shed, there's a small and large dog area. Apparently, they're not a fan of trees, the standard foundation, which I find interesting. So, yeah, I mean, a few. So, you know, probably some sort of shade structure, plant structures for dogs, maybe benches. I can, again, I can send you this kind of temporary, sort of group, root of entry schematic we had for the Oliver proposal. But it's pretty much a run area with maybe some sort of structural features for the dogs to go, to go under, on, water, parking.
And there's, and I learned today that there's a large park for big dogs and a park for small dogs. My biggest concern is, well, if the big dog bites the little dog, what happens?
They're separated.
They're separated. And secondly, I didn't tell you this, there's water right near this, in the center.
It's easy to access.
Because it's supposed to collide water, right? No, it's right in the cemetery, right?
Yeah, but I mean, you know.
It's a simple, dig a ditch and put a pipe in, it's not very far, it's 100.
All right, so, thank you so much. I really.
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Well, so, yeah, so I think this is great. I mean, because, so I'll, I'll say a few things, just if you don't mind me sharing my thoughts. I think, you know, look, this was, this was my agenda item, I was, I was very passionate about this project, but having, you know, also had time to reflect on a number of things, I think the Oliver parcel would be problematic. So one thing that I would consider is honestly, is just removing it from consideration. So, I know, I know, so let me, let me finish then, we can make all the motions we want. The Parks and Rec Commission meets on the 18th, so we have to, technically, we have to wait until they meet and vote in order to move forward with this parcel.
Do we have to send an official letter from the Property Committee?
Yes. I understand that part.
I already did it, right? Okay, I'm just saying, that's, he was asking.
No, 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 so, so we have to wait to get permission and then we have to move forward with asking Fender Bag in order to determine if Virtue Design can then drop schematics. I, I, one thing I think of, I think too, just to avoid a time crunch, is maybe even think about the first week in May, to allow us to get our ducks in a row, we can meet right after.
He said eight, the second meeting in April would be fine. He was worried it would be in the first meeting.
No, it's too close.
That's more than a month. And he doesn't think Virtue Design has a lot of, you know, they don't have to build a new bridge, they have the whole thing. They just have to look at the land, get some distances.
That's fine, if you feel comfortable.
So that's a conversation you should have, Jeff could always change at a public hearing.
I know, we've worked on it twice.
So long, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so.
Get it right.
And we could delay that decision until.
Can I just ask, I have, Jeff sent me the two plans they have for Oliver Street.
Okay.
There's no flat land here, how are people, what were they going to do? Just modify the whole terrain?
Well.
Just flatten it out and make a parking lot or plenty of cars?
Well, I think the topography looked like it was flat enough, but I can tell you right now that, again, if you bear with me, I think that, that might not be an issue anymore.
Oliver Street is done.
So here's, so here's, so here's the title, the timeline, we, we need to consider, we need to consider potentially eliminating Oliver Street as an option. We need to consider voting on the, for lack of a better term, the cemetery area land as, as an option to request it's, it's used by the Parks Commission.
That's an abuse of nature.
Right, and then we have to wait.
It's city property adjacent to the park.
And then we have to wait for that response, so if the, the, the Parks Commission meets the 18th, correct? So, I mean, we can meet, if we met shortly after that, potentially even the 19th, then we can move forward with the next set of requests, we include officially asking them for the new design schematics. I still, just looking at the, the calendar, I mean, so the second meeting in April is the 15th.
We can do it in May, I don't care.
So you want to take out the first?
Well, we have to. These are just suggestions I'm making, I need to wait for the committee to listen to my proposal and then make some motions. But I just think, because then we'd have to meet again to look at the schematics and do an actual, you know, our due diligence with the community, have a look at the schematics and, and then move that forward for a public hearing, so, you know, the second, second meeting in April, yes.
That's what I'm saying, I just thought, talk to Jeff, because he really likes the public involvement. He may not want to go to Oliver Street while talking to him. It's your prerogative, I say, but.
It's pretty comfortable.
Well, all right. He just said he wants both sites up at public hearing so people can hear everything, but you could still do that.
It's fine, we can do that.
Even if you decide you don't want to do it, I think there needs to be an explanation that a public hearing has to.
I don't care about keeping a plan because I think that there's three counselors here, at least four, that would say that they're not going to vote for it in a public hearing anyway, so.
I have some, I just, I just feel like if we know we're not going to vote for it, it's like disingenuous to keep bringing it forward. Like, if it's only going to cause animus, I haven't heard like any support for it in my, so what's the point?
If you report it out at the meeting this week, if you've decided to discontinue it, some counselor say, please don't do that, that you can change it.
From conversation, I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah, okay.
But talk to Jeff about that.
So maybe, maybe in all fairness to the planners, done a lot of work with this, at least let me talk to him, we can certainly move that the next, meet at the next meeting. So, but you have my word that I'm really not invested in that property anymore.
It doesn't have the votes on the council, it's not going to happen.
So again, we need to, so the strategic dates are the Parks Commission meeting on the 18th, we need to send them a formal request to consider the site. If they give us a yes, then we can move forward with requesting that the planner request further schematics for that site. And then probably have to meet again after that just to review that and put it to a public hearing. So I'd leave it up to you two, but the middle of April makes me a little nervous with that.
I'm fine with that.
So, you know, I'm on my way in six. I am, I'm on my way on six, so.
Anyway, I would say, would I email to John Mason, get a few, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to make the motion in March at the meeting.
March 18th is on next week.
We can meet, because somebody can meet in April, we need like April 7th to make here.
But I will.
We can set a public hearing.
Then we'll say we have.
So we have to, we can set the public hearing for the middle of April if there's a problem.
Yeah.
Just do that, I think we can do that.
Yeah, I just think, email to John is all you need to do with the budget request, because Jim said he's going to have to walk down.
Yeah. Councilor Rist, thank you so much.
Thank you for this, I say, thank you. I want to thank John Mason in public because without him, this wouldn't have happened because he just came up with this idea in a different meeting.
Yeah, well, so I want to ask, I heard requests for it to be innovative and I think he puts a pause on innovative, so I appreciate that.
Well, to be clear, he, you know, the Parks Commission didn't want a park in the park, and I understand that because they're understaffed and underfunded. And Oliver Street, they were, yeah, and gated, they're only, it's only seasonal, they were concerned about Oliver Street because of getting out there for maintenance. Oliver Street because of getting out there for maintenance. The fact that they were basically supporting this space, and they're also willing to help maintain it, and, because the other thing is that we're not gonna act as a proxy to back it up, if a friend's a, who pulled it, so this is really a win.
It's a big win.
Because they're in the cemetery anyway, in the...
And they may have more friends, because it's downtown, they may get more people involved, because it's getting people in the middle of the city involved, and you might get more, I really think it's gonna be used, that's the big thing. Oliver Street's not gonna be used, and this will be used.
And safer.
Yeah.
And as I said to John, it's gonna reduce the amount of roaming dogs in the park, because they have alternatives now. If I let the dog free, it's a big plot of land for them to do.
And we all fenced in, like you said.
Thank you guys for some...
Thank you.
Take care, you're welcome.
Uh, I guess, so any, any more discussion from the committee members?
I'm comfortable in moving it from the table.
The only thing is, I'd wanna make a call to Jeff, just to, I agree, I think I feel that's what's gonna happen, but I feel a professional courtesy, I just don't wanna pull in and tell him after the fact, if that's okay. I think that's what the end result is gonna be, is that okay, I mean, comfortable with that?
I can't see them supporting Oliver Street.
I agree with you too, but, but I don't wanna pull in and, I'd like, I'd like to have a conversation with them and then do that. But it's up to you.
I mean, Frank Meyer, I think that we said publicly and on camera that, like, we don't have any support for Oliver Street. And when they were like, say it's not gonna go forward, but it's professional courtesy when they have a public hearing.
I was just gonna say, you can make a contingent on Jeff's approval of this, to say, let's, take this off the table, contingent on what Jeff has to say about it.
Because he knows about the...
Right, I just, I don't, we cannot be in here, and the conversation I had with them was something similar, what Councilor said, was that we, we put them both up for a vote, and regardless, I think what we're discussing right now, we know which one would be voted on.
Reasons, right.
Right, but I just, from, this is just my, my personal ethic, is that I don't want, he's not here, if we're here, I'd be allowed this conversation with him, he's not, and I prefer just to be able to say, here's the conversation we've had, and this is, this is what's gonna happen, instead of going to him and say, oh, I got some bad news for you. So that's just me, and, you know...
Finally, finally.
As far as I'm concerned, either we find that this side, either this side works, side of the park.
Or we wait.
Or we wait.
Or we wait, yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
And given that as our base, find who can try and fix it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, then...
Can I make a motion for the study, or not yet?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that I request you send to the Parker Rec Commission, that the location off Wilson Avenue be approved for a study. Two, three.
Okay, so a motion, a second, to send a request to the Parks Commission to vote on whether the land off of Wilson Avenue could be approved for a study for a dog park, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three, nothing. Passes.
Would also be in favor of writing a letter to, Jeff making that request formal from the property committee, providing that need to support the Parks Commission.
Oh, to further the design?
I would, I would move requesting a study from the Dog Park Commission.
One second.
Just a quick question, so basically, essentially, contingent on the approval, then he can just start moving ahead? Okay. Alright, so theoretically, we would have to, like, meet, right, immediately, or we could, well, maybe get to the, then we can, once we, we can meet once we have the study off, we can meet in the absence of the study. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, should we, I mean, we could, I don't think, we could certainly vote on this, but I guess we're gonna probably move the public hearing, at least stay on that deal, right?
At least.
So if we could just do that, the meeting, uh, next week, if you want, just, I mean...
We don't have to make the, it doesn't hurt if we had a motion.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Move that we plan to, where is it now?
It's the first.
Should we go to the second, the second meeting?
It's, no, it was April 1st, we've already moved it to April 1st, and now, but I guess, my only concern, that I really wanna make sure, whatever we move it to is the final date, 'cause I've already moved it, you know, this'll be the second time moving it.
Well, let's wait until the meeting to see if the ducks are on.
Okay. So theoretically then, I could talk to Jeff, in terms of setting a meeting, I could talk to Jeff about how quickly he thinks he can get the designs done, and then we could probably set our meeting around that.
That makes sense.
Is that, okay?
The design, is it, they're just doing the property outline, or they're doing the parking?
I can actually show you something really quickly.
That's in, yeah.
Here, I'll show you something.
Airlock gate, basically.
Just don't look at the rest of my pictures, although they're...
Like the stuff inside, like the water features, is that on?
Oh, it's not features, it's some water trough where they...
Are we far enough from the pond to be able to impact without severe erosion issues? Are we far enough away from boundaries?
So the specifics of what's in the park?
It's usually they put a ramp, dogs go over a ramp, or a tire, or...
Maybe some jumps or something, makes sense, dogs are excited.
I think that one has been offered.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is 'cause I'm intrigued by, have listed, and besides dogs, that one, certainly we have, that people, that all the dogs can use, and then also obstacle courses for the dogs, like passing from like that, and I love that.
Will show up in the design, that's done later.
I mean, the great thing about this site too, is that, you know, if I was assuming there was, there'd be a lot less site crap that was gonna be required for, with the proposal